Call to order. The City Commission meeting of Dickinson, North Dakota for April 7th, 2020. For most of you watching, you'll see that we're under different circumstances here. We're televising this live and promoting social distancing. We're trying to keep our distance from each other. But the records show that all commissioners are present. We have one commissioner present by telephone. Commissioner Trustum. The Order of Business, Mr. Gah, are there any changes to the Order of Business?
Thank you, President Decker. There are no changes. I just want to highlight a little bit on the procedure that is a little bit of a change. We have still enabled a public comment section, so you'll note on your agenda a 5:00 timetable. And at that time, we will call into the conference line at 456-7006. And if there's citizens with a comment, they'll follow similar protocol of their giving their name and their address and then taking their statements. Currently, we have Public Works Director Gary Zuroff and City Engineer Craig Kubis on the line. They will discuss their agenda items via the conference line as well.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Gah. Any questions for Mr. Gah or staff on the Order of Business or how we're conducting Not, I'd look for a motion on the Order of Business.
Move.
Second.
We have a motion to approve the Order of Business with a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the Order of Business as presented, state aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda that commissioners wish to discuss? Not, I'd look for a motion on the consent agenda.
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
With a second. Any further discussion on consent agenda? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Move right into the regular agenda. And first item up is Administration and Finance. And we have Deputy City Administrator Carlson. You'll be presenting the Historic Preservation Commission appointment.
Thank you, Commissioner. This memo is from Bob Furman, the Dickinson Historic Preservationist and Museum Director. And this is for the Historic Preservation Commission nominee. As it reads, "Mr. President, Commissioners, I am pleased to appear before you today to ask you to consider giving your approval to the nomination of Mr. Stephen Mannan to the Dickinson Historic Preservation Commission. As you will recall, one of the responsibilities of a certified local government is that we maintain a qualified Historic Preservation Commission, whose members preferably possess professional qualifications in history, architectural history, archaeology, anthropology, curation, planning, landscape architecture, or related fields. In addition to an interest and willingness to serve, Mr. Mannan's education experience and background touch on several of those fields. Mr. Mannan has worked in the archaeology field for 17 years. He's earned a bachelor's degree in anthropology and a minor in creative writing from St. Cloud State University, and then further studies in anthropology at Texas Tech University in 2016. Mr. Mannan is currently a GS-11 archaeologist with the Bureau of Land Management's Dickinson's Office, and his previous professional postings include extensive fieldwork and collections management with various federal agencies. I would, I believe he would be a fine addition to Dickinson Historic Preservation Commission. At this time, the Dickinson Historic Preservation Commission asks that Steve Mannan be considered for the membership on the HPC and that his letter of interest and resume be submitted to the Certified Local Government Coordinator at the State Historical Society of North Dakota for review and approval." And I stand for questions that I might not know.
Any questions for Mrs. Carlson on this appointment? Hearing none, I'd look for a motion on the appointment of Mr. Mannan to the Historic Preservation Commission.
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve.
Second.
With a second. Any further discussion, questions? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries to appoint Mr. Mannan to the Historic Preservation Commission.
Thank you.
Next item up is the American Bank Center Purchase Agreement and Parking Agreement. Mr. Gah.
Yes, thank you, President Decker and Commission. As you'll recall, back last fall, I believe in October, you approved submitting two agreements to the American Bank Center. The first one was a purchase agreement. Purchase agreement addressed the city acquiring the insurance building in exchange for some cash and this building. The MOU basically addressed the city acquiring the town square site, which is where their current one-story bank building is that they will demolish. And for that, trading a couple of currently owned city parking lot. Those were sent over. Really, the terms of the agreement didn't change any. It's just the content of the agreements upon their legal counsel recommendations is the purchase agreement now includes all transferring of property. So, the bank building for this building and the sum of cash that was discussed before, and then also the parking lots and trading the parking lot and acquiring the town square site. So, all of that is accomplished in the purchase agreement. And then the MOU is simply just a parking lot agreement that discusses how the parking lot, that right now is a large city-owned parking lot. Half of it's asphalted, half of it is just gravel. Mostly the old city hall site as far as a reference point. It's the plan for us to improve that west side of that parking lot and then have the whole thing operate like a private, or excuse me, a public parking lot, even though some of it will be owned by the bank and some of it will be owned by the city. All of those terms are within the parking lot agreement MOU. So, everything's the same, everything's what we had hoped for, everything's what was initially discussed, just formatted a little bit differently.
In this, Mr. Gah, once this is voted on by the Commission, and if it does pass, this would go back to their board for approval.
Correct.
So, it's still another step, and this is, we're not the final step. So, they have to see it again. And this has gone back and forth extensively between the law firms. So, and I think we've finally narrowed it down to exactly what'll work for both entities. Any other questions, comments? No questions or comments, okay? We'll do each one separately, or we'll be able to approve both with one vote. Mrs. Lincoln.
No matter. But my recommendation is that we should be considering a new set of areas that we have.
Okay. We shall do that. First item up, then, looking for a motion on the purchase agreement.
Mr. President, I make a motion. We approve the purchase agreement for, between American Bank Center and the City of Dickinson.
We have a motion to approve the purchase agreement between American Bank Center and the City of Dickinson.
Second.
We have two seconds. So, to approve the purchase between American Bank Center and the City of Dickinson. Any further discussion, questions? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Second item up would be the MOU for the town square and our parking lot, or the joint parking lot located west of the town square.
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve the MOU.
Second.
With a second. Any further questions, comments? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Frederick?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries.
Mr. President.
Mrs. Trustum?
I have a question for Mr. Gah. We have been on the table about as we go through the board for American Bank Center. I know we have this, um, B and E that is waiting for this final approval to make it started, um, without work somewhere. So, if we could just get a brief update, that would be wonderful.
Sure. Okay, we'll continue on this evening. We have nothing from Public Safety, and we'll move into Engineering. Mr. Kubis, you have a Sidewalk Improvement District.
The Sidewalk Improvement District is essentially the same project that we bid out last year. It's the same resolution with updated dates and a new resolution number. Again, it's a voluntary program that we've tried to focus our resources on city sidewalks, that is, city property that has no sidewalk. We believe we have, we have most of those sidewalks cleaned up, although there are a few areas that we intend to do this year. But again, if there's any questions from the program we've done last year, it's really essentially the same, the same type of projects. We have the plans ready to bid, and as soon as the resolution is passed, we'll bid out this project. And I can open it up to any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Kubis?
Mr. Kubis, can you just kind of give us an overview of how many dollars the public used, or private individuals used, and maybe of the program? How much?
So, I don't have the dollars in front of me right here, working from home, but we had budgeted last year $200,000 and had done the same for 2020 as well. We didn't quite use all that budgeted dollars last year. I want to say we used about $150,000 of it, of which I would say that the good majority, probably 125-plus, were for city projects. So, the private use of the project was, was not exactly what we had hoped for. We did find some success, though, in some outreach with targeted letters to individuals, where we had either received a complaint or had just noticed, you know, people walking on the street in a certain area around a lot that didn't have sidewalks. So, I think we'll intend to do that again this year with some letters to individual property owners, just requesting that, you know, that they consider using the program that's out there.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Kubis? Not, I'd look for a motion on, and this would be Resolution 132020?
Move to approve Resolution Number 1320.
We have a motion to approve 132020?
Second.
With a second. Any further questions, comments for Mr. Kubis or staff? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Mr. Kubis, you have the KLJ 2020 Millon Overlay bid.
Yes, thank you, President Decker. This was a project we've had much discussion about, our 2020 Millon Overlay. The project was bid on March 16th, and two bids were received. The low bid was from Northern Improvement Company in the amount of $4,768,987.75. We did receive two bidders, which in the past, we haven't had luck getting two bidders. So, we did have a second bid from Wind Construction. Both bids were within about 10% of the low bid, so we would consider that normally to be pretty good bids. The engineer's estimate was $4.75 million, so that low bid was just, you know, just a shade above $18,000 above our estimate. So, city staff would recommend awarding this project to Northern Improvement Company. With that, I can open it up for any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Kubis? Hearing no questions for Mr. Kubis on this bid, I'd look for a motion on the bid. We have a motion to approve.
Second.
With a second. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Next item up is the special assessment, the consideration to approve the resolution. Mr. Kubis?
Yes, thank you, President Decker. This was, this item, this special assessment, was on the agenda last meeting. We had tabled it. To clarify a few things, the first of which is, is one, that it's only for sewer service lines, because we're talking about improvements that would be made and assessed would be in the city's right-of-way. The city is responsible for the water service line in the right-of-way. So, just to be doubly clear, this only applies to sewer service lines in the city's right-of-way. And then we also clarified that the last bullet or the last item in this resolution clarifies that the assessment rate will be what we had talked about on other projects, that 1.5% above the 10-year T-note for a term of 10 years. I think that that answers the questions we had from the last meeting. With that, I'd open it up to any questions you'd have.
Any questions for Mr. Kubis? This would be Resolution 142020, because we did not assign one when we tabled it. So, 142020. If there are no questions for Mr. Kubis, I'd look for a motion on the special assessment for the sewer lines.
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve.
Second.
With a second. Any further questions, comments? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Kubis. I think you can go, Mr. Kubis. Thank you. Next up is Public Works, and we have on the line Mr. Zuroff, Public Works Director, and you have a couple of annual land lease agreements.
Yes, thank you, President Decker. I have two farm leases with Mr. Randy Handel. The first one is for the property near the water reclamation facility, and it is for 111 acres. I just want to maybe explain that area a little bit. There is more city property there, but we do rotate that land. One part of it is farmed one year, and then we rotate because we do inject our bio-solids on the other portion of that property. So, the number of acreage will vary from year to year on that agreement. So, the first one for approval is the 111 acres at $38 an acre, and I'd be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for Mrs. Zuroff on this land lease agreement? Just for the general public, we have been leasing this out since the inception of the Water Treatment Center. Do we do it initially, Mr. Zuroff, from year one, or was it the second year we started this?
I believe out there, it was the second year. The first year, we, you know, not knowing how the application would work and this operations of the plant, I don't believe we did it the first year.
Okay, thank you. So, this is land out by our Water Treatment Center. So, I'd look, if there are no questions, I'd look for a motion on this farm lease agreement.
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve.
Second.
With a second. Any further questions, comments? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Second item up is another land lease with Mr. Handel. This is located, I'll have Mr. Zuroff explain it.
No, thank, yeah, this is the property just kind of near the fire training center and just north of the cemetery city property. And this is at least annually for quite a long time, and it's 112 acres at the same price of $38 an acre. And again, if there's any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Okay, any questions for Mrs. Zuroff on this lease agreement? Hearing none, I'd look for a motion on this lease agreement with Mr. Handel?
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve.
Second.
With a second. Any further questions, comments? Hearing no questions or comments, I'd look, I'll go ahead and take a vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries.
Thank you, President Decker. The last item I have is a task order with Apex for services to help with the state Clean Water State Revolving Fund program and the loan close-out documents. They have assisted us in the previous loans with the SRF, and the amount is $8,200. And I would sure answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for Mr. Zuroff with this task order? Hearing that there are no questions, I'd look for a motion on the, excuse me, Apex Task Order.
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve.
Second.
With a second. Any further questions, comments? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Thank you, Mrs. Zuroff. Do you have anything else?
No, I'll be available if you have any questions from the public.
Okay, well, I'll just put you on mute for now. Okay, we'll move into planning. Mr. Hadley, you have a few items this evening?
I do, thank you, Mr. President. First item would be Resolution 152020, and it's for a final plat for Market Edition. It's corner 21st and State Avenue. It's a commercial development, four lots. Went through the Planning Commission meeting with no objections. The staff and Planning Commission would recommend approval of this final plat.
Any questions for Mr. Hadley on this Resolution 15-2020? And this would be the final plat for the Market Edition.
Do they plan on construction this year yet?
Right now, it's on hold, I believe, but they want to, they're just going to see what happens. We have a number of building permits that are going through the process right now, but still a lot of activity as far as inquiries through my office. So, I'm going to say that there's still a lot of interest for people to get going, but I don't think he's going to start tomorrow.
Move to approve.
Here we have a motion to approve with a second. Are there any other questions, discussion? Hearing no other questions or discussion on the Resolution 15-2020, we'll go ahead and vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Mr. Hadley, you have a final plat for, and Resolution 162020 on the Anderson property?
I do, thank you, Mr. President. It's along 14th Street East here in Dickinson. It's a large piece of property that a property owner is dividing up so a family member can build a home, and they're, they're looking to pursue that this year, I believe. Once again, the Planning Commission had a meeting on this. There wasn't any objections, and the Planning Commission and staff would recommend approval as well of Resolution 162020.
Any questions for Mr. Hadley? Not, I'd look for a motion on 16-2020.
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve.
Second.
With a second. Any further questions, comments? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote. Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries on 162020. Mr. Hadley, you have a special use permit for Basin Electric.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. This would be Resolution 17-2020, special use permit for Basin Electric to upgrade their facilities, existing facilities at 3957 109th Avenue Southwest in the Dickinson ETZ. The Planning Commission also had a public hearing on this request with no opposition, and the Planning Commission and staff would recommend approval.
Thank you, Mr. Hadley. Any questions for Mr. Hadley on this, on Resolution 17-2020? This is, again, for the public, a special use permit to Basin Electric for additional equipment at an existing power substation within an agricultural district. Hearing there are no questions or comments, I'd look for a motion on 17-2020.
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve.
Second.
With a second. Any further comments, questions? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Mr. Hadley, you have a Renaissance Zone project for K. Schwartz Properties.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. This would be Resolution 182020. It's for 137 First Avenue West here in downtown Dickinson. It went through the public hearing process, and she meets all the requirements for the Renaissance Zone. Planning Commission had a hearing, as I said, and staff and Planning Commission would recommend approval. This is for a bistro project that she's been considering for a few years.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Hadley on 18-2020, which is, again, is for the public, a resolution approving a Renaissance Zone application by K. Schwartz Properties LLC? Hearing no questions, I'd look for a motion on 18-2020.
Mr. President, move to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve by Ms. Walla, second by Mr. Frederick. Any further questions, comments? Hearing none, we'll vote. Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries on 18-2020. In your last item, Mr. Hadley, you have the Renaissance Zone project for Odyssey Entertainment Incorporated.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. This would be Resolution 19-2020. It's located at 24 Second Street East, directly across the street from City Hall, current City Hall. Planning Commission heard this item as well, and there wasn't any public opposition to it, and they approved it as presented, and staff and the Planning Commission would recommend approval of it.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Hadley on this resolution to approve a Renaissance Zone project for Odyssey Entertainment, and this is Resolution 19-2020? Hearing no questions, I'd look for a motion on 19-2020.
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve 19-2020.
Second.
With a second. Any further questions, comments? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote. Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries on 19-2020. Thank you, Mr. Hadley.
Thank you.
And we are right at 5:00. Perfect timing. I would take credit for that, but not that good.
All right, we're going to hang up this current line.
Okay, we're getting hung up on, Gary.
The conference is currently empty. You will hear...
So you can do your normal call, you normally would, and then not hang it up.
And since we are broadcasting this live, right? We are. Uh, I got the thumbs up that we still are live. Uh, this is the segment of the City Commission meeting that we open up the public comments, not on the agenda, which was scheduled for 5:00 PM this evening. If you are watching live and you have any public comments and you want to call in, please call in at 701-456-7006, and we'll give you a few minutes to, uh, we'll wait for some calls here if there are any calls. So anybody from the public with concerns, not on the agenda, please call into that number. Again, that number is 701-456-7006. Anyone from the public? He's at the "I don't know." Said you're at the "I don't know."
At the "I don't know."
Anyone from the public? Like I said, uh, how much of a delay are we on? 30 seconds? Okay, we'll give him a couple more minutes, just in case somebody does want to call in. While we're waiting for any calls, I would say that this has gone over pretty well. I hope this is not the norm in the future. For some very interesting meetings.
We'll need a bigger conference room if we have to keep her this far apart. For the future. While, while we're adjourned, President Decker, tomorrow at 9:00 AM is the Board of Equalization. Um, are all the commissioners planning on attending or calling in? What is your thoughts on?
I plan on being here, so...
I plan on attending also.
Yep. Mrs. Trustum?
I will probably attend. It's really difficult to hear anyone but you, Mayor Decker, so, um, I would plan to be in attendance until we can maybe find a better solution.
Okay, we'll do that. We'll plan on you being here, so... I think we've given adequate time. We're up to about four minutes now. No one's called in. So I will close the public comments on, uh, items that are not on the agenda for the evening. Commissioners, are there anything you wish to discuss?
Mr. President, uh, Mr. Gah, can you give an update on the recycling program? I received a call just before I got here asking questions about it. Yes, thank you, Commissioner Steiner. That's, uh, some of the things when we talk about the, the COVID virus and the response is, is the virus living on surfaces, um, folks handling surfaces, transporting materials, and all of that that applies to the, the, uh, transportation of our recycling. So, uh, the Public Works staff has made some adjustments. Uh, your recycling can be put out in the blue barrels like normal, side by side with your, your, uh, your trash on your normal pickup day. Um, and it will be picked up in the same trucks in the same ways, uh, normally. It's just they will both go to the, the landfill at this point in time rather than being handled and then transported. Uh, we're hoping that's, that's a relatively short, uh, time span, and then we will be able to go back and simply pick them up the same way and then go back to the hauling. So really, the, the customer, the, the citizens shouldn't notice any changes in how we're picking it up at their household. One of the questions was, are we gonna discontinue charging for that time? One of the things that's been discussed, um, and, and we should probably bring that actually as a motion to the commission at the next one, um, is, is we made that decision after bills had gone out. Um, it's not all of the cost each month, but part of it, uh, but it might just be easiest to, to approve a fee waiver of one month. Um, and if we did that at the next meeting, we could not include the recycling fee, uh, with the garbage fee for, for one month's time, or if you wanted to do more, um, depending on how long this, this is. But yes, that was part of the, the thought process behind that. And, and I'll make that motion later, but, uh, to squash the other rumor is, we did, we have not lost our, uh, recycle, uh, contractors. Yes, it has nothing to do with, with having a place to take it. It just has to do with, with handling materials. That's the other rumor out there. I want to make sure we, you know, we did not lose them. So if, if that's, uh, we'll, we'll add, we will bring that fee waiver to the next meeting. Very good. Okay.
I think that would be the right thing to do right now.
Absolutely.
I mean, we're just, um, we're looking out for our employees and, but we, we still, um, we want to collect this, and I know people are getting used to the recycling and...
So if you have excess garbage, you can throw it into the recycling bin now? We kind of like to keep it separate because we actually just started separating the trucks that we hauled them in, and it makes it so, keeping the, the items separate in your barrels.
Keep them separate, yeah.
Would be, but...
Probably, probably be the right thing to do right now. It's just the same stuff.
Mr. President, I'd make that motion that we eliminate that one-month charge.
Okay, and I think Mr. Gah's gonna bring that to...
We'll, we'll bring that back.
Next meeting, okay, super. Next meeting, and we'll approve it. Anything else, commissioners?
No.
Okay, um, I got, uh, three things, one for commissioners. Um, we're coming up on the six months that we had the discussion back in November in executive session. Uh, Mr. Gah's contract, we need to have a resolution with that, so if you want to have it the next meeting or have it a special meeting by, um, Zoom or whatever we are allowed to do legally, Mrs. Winko, you have executive, um, to discuss his contract, and so it can be on the agenda at the next meeting. Um, two, oh, well, before I go on to that, I'll have Rita, will you reach out to all the commissioners or, uh, I mean, it's up to you. We can decide now if we want to do a special meeting. Like I said, if, can we do it by Zoom, like an executive, or do we need to all be here? I mean, it's just gonna be us, so that, we can practice social distancing pretty easy that way.
Correct, uh, President Decker. Uh, we still have to follow the same formalities with regard to the, the executive session and what that entails, so it still has to be properly noticed. It still has to be recorded, so I think it's probably easier just to do it in this type of setting.
Okay. Okay, well, Rita, please send out, uh, to everyone here, um, what your schedules are like. I know we're a little bit somewhat more flexible now because of the situations we're all in, but that way we can program that. Um, two, uh, we had discussions with Mr. Gah and Mrs. Carlson about also setting up like a work session, special meeting with the DDA, DID, and the City Commission and, and some staff. We need to, uh, sit down, have a hard discussion on the town square and where we're going with the DDA and DID. Um, much like we do with Stark Development and the county commissioners and the park board, we need to have that discussion. And again, that could be something that can be arranged with a, um, teleconference or over the internet, but I think we need to all get on the same page on what we're doing here, so... And then three, uh, been in contact, uh, contact with, uh, our Public Works Department, and as a symbol to, uh, to our residents and the, um, the citizens of the surrounding area, uh, I've asked the, uh, Public Works to light our star in, uh, Rocky Butte Park until this is over. Uh, the star will be lit, um, just at night, and it's kind of a, a symbol like many communities are doing, um, just to, to show that we're all in this together. And this kind of came from a, a resident in Dickinson, made the suggestion that she had seen this in another community and was wondering if there was something we could do on that scale for, for our citizens too. So it was a great idea on her part. Um, shout out to Jackie for that. She knows who she is, and, uh...
I think that'd be a great idea, number one, because I think we're kind of nipping this thing right now in the next couple of weeks, but looking at the traffic today, I wonder if people are kind of losing the reminder a little bit. There are an awful lot of traffic out there today, so that's a nice little reminder that maybe I should get home.
Yeah, and, and just, again, to the public, um, the message that I've been trying to put out every week is, is practice social distancing, go out only when you have, you know, to get medical supplies, food, and I, I think the biggest thing that concerns me is when I see whole families shopping. And I understand that there are certain circumstances, but there are a lot of times I see families, and there are either teenagers or adult children traveling in a pack, and I don't think that's advisable right now, that all those people need to be go, you know, to, uh, a grocery store or Walmart or Menards together. Just try to take care of each other and, uh, practice the social distancing. Get outside, get your exercise, but, um, we'll get, we'll get through this. It's, it's something that, uh, we can be, we can be smart about this and still, um, have some activity and, and take care of ourselves, so, um, just please, please try to, um, practice the social distancing. I, I don't want it to be where the governor's having to issue an executive order making us stay in our homes. I think we can be more practical than having to be ordered to stay in, so... Anything else? Mrs. Trustum?
Nope, that's it.
All right.
President Decker, I would recommend, since we haven't had any calls, that you make that final announcement.
Okay, I, I thought I did, but, um, I'm gonna, uh, close the public comments. See how many transfers I get. Okay, no other comments? Look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
A motion to adjourn?
Second.
With a second. We are adjourned.
Thanks. See you tomorrow.
See you tomorrow.